And we're ready.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council, September 24th, 2025. Bill after 6 o'clock. We're here in City Council chambers at 345 High Street in Hamilton. Roll call, please.
Moller.
Present.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Present.
Nab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
We have a quorum.
We're going to start off with a offering of prayer by Councilmember Susan Vaughn, called by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please state if you are able.
Father, we gather this evening as members of Hamilton City Council mindful of the opportunity to render our service to the community. We seek guidance, wisdom, and support in all decisions we make. We challenge ourselves to engage in meaningful discussions and to give our best always. We're thankful for the services provided by our first responders and ask for continued safety for all. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, my reading of the agenda, we have no special presentation this evening. Okay, mark that off. Now go to Audience of Citizens. If individuals wish to make comments, may speak during this part of the agenda or may wait or may deserve the right to speak specifically when the item is up for vote on the council floor. Council requires you to sign this public speaking book. We have two people who signed the book and each speaker's allowed up to five minutes. First, we have Jim Long.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. Um, yeah, question for you. I report a car still, it's still parking on the streets. I talked about parking in front of the signs that says no parking near the corner in front of the sign, which is illegal. And one thing, good on people like that.
Well, let me ask you this. Do you have other questions? I want to have you say all your questions first and then we'll make a few comments. Okay, is there anything else besides that one, Jim? Anything else besides that?
I just wonder why they don't get on them, you know?
You have expressed very well how much this means to you and it does mean a lot to us too, that people park where they shouldn't park. It's selfish and it can be dangerous at times. So I think we have all heard your concern and you kind of like watch out there for us, you know?
Oh, yeah.
So we all appreciate you coming here and saying things about potholes and about the way people park. I know enough people watch this that they're going to start getting the message and hopefully they're less selfish. So Jim, thank you for bringing that up and thanks for coming to the council meeting.
Well, thank you. Hope everything goes good.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
You too. Next, we have Mel. And Mel, if you would give us your full name and address, please, and then address the subject you want to have us listen.
Melvin Cornet, 725 Carlisle Avenue, Hamilton, Ohio.
Okay.
All right, I'm here because a year ago I purchased a $7,000 golf cart and then I went and got tags for it, street legal golf cart. And I was just informed I could no longer ride it on the street even though it's street legal when I have tags on it. And I just wanted to know where council's sitting on it.
Well, we're not necessarily sitting on it, but we are actively reviewing it. Sign Andrew, can you go ahead and give us a status of where we're at right now?
Sure. So sir, first of all, it depends on whether the cart you have is an underspeed vehicle or a low-speed vehicle. And there's different regulations and restrictions based on that. So what we did last week at ordinance review commission, the law director, Ms. Letitia Block, made a presentation to the ordinance review commission. There's some research that's being done right now and she plans to come back with a presentation about what options council may have that ordinance review commission will review and maybe make recommendations to council to make changes. It could include allowing for underspeed vehicles to be utilized in a city, which they are currently not. And it could include additional restrictions on low-speed vehicles that are permitted right now, but maybe reduce some of the ways they're allowed to be used currently. So I would suggest if you want to know more information and stay up to date, have input on that process is to attend our next ordinance review commission meeting. I'll get you that date and time here before you leave.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Hold on a minute, Mel. Mr. City Clerk, do you have a date to that next ordinance review commission meeting?
Please.
I'm asking our city clerk if he's got the date for the next meeting. So maybe you might know if we actually have a meeting that day that's going to be addressed, but at least to know when it's going to be.
Looks like October 15th.
15th, okay.
October 15th at 8:00 in the morning, here where you're at right now.
Okay.
So Mr. Cornet, this has been much discussed and of course, it kind of opens the door to some other type of vehicles and e-scooters and e-bikes and everything. I mean, we're going to, we're looking at carts, but those other will be discussed at some point in time as well. But thanks for coming to the council meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
I do want to say something, Mr. Cornet. First of all, I've had the joy to talk to you the first time you came up here and we talked tonight. Just to let everybody know, I mean, I think you were kind of worried if you could come up and say something again. And you're a gentleman. I mean, you talk, you know, you talk to me very well. We had a great conversation. I do appreciate you coming up here, but absolutely, I mean, that's what you're here, that's what we're here for. You need to come up and get updated on it. Take your five minutes, whatever, like I told you before, it's, don't be embarrassed. Anybody that, you know, wants to come up, make sure you come up and tell us what you feel and we're going to listen. And I do appreciate the kind of conversation that we have and I'm sure we're going to have a few more and I'm sure we'll get something done for you. But you come up every time if you want. I mean, it's, anybody in this city's loud coming up, so.
I appreciate it. It's just all the suits making me nervous.
Well, you know, under these suits, we all still wear, you know, t-shirts or whatever. So we're nobody different than you. So I appreciate you coming up here and I want you to feel comfortable when you come up.
I appreciate you speaking with me, sir.
Yeah, no problem. Anytime. You got my, I think I gave you my card. You got my number, you know, give me a call. We'll be glad to talk to you, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mr. Cornet, as we're aware, that there's an audience of citizens also as part of the ordinance review commission. So if you hear something and you want to tell us, and three of us do sit on the ordinance review commission, including the chair, as council member Fear, there's an audience of citizens. So if you hear something that morning at ordinance review and you want to say something then, you can do that.
Mr. Mayor.
And.
Mr. Cornet, can I ask you one question out of curiosity?
Yes.
Did you buy the cart with the intention of driving it on the street?
Yes.
Okay, just anywhere. So that was going to be your mode of transportation throughout the city was your intention when you bought it?
Yes, and I've been driving it for the last year on the street and no problem. Everybody goes by and waves at me and smiles and I'm always courteous. I ease over to the side of the road and let them go by emotion for them.
Okay.
And I never really went down main streets. I always just stayed off into the subdivisions because I felt myself that it was more safer that way.
Okay.
And it's also legally tagged. That's the thing is, is that that's what we got to get over is we're getting, the BMB is tagging these vehicles even if they're underspeed vehicles. And so here, they're going to get their work done and, you know, they're going, they're going to the bureau and they're giving them tags to drive on the street. So I mean, that's where, that's where we got to figure out this, okay? And so, I mean, I get why you drive it on the street because you got tags up there, but then it's against our laws for you to, yeah.
It's kind of confusing, Mr. Mayor. There's a lot of things to consider.
Thanks for talking with us. You and I had met. I'm glad you came up to share your story. As Ms. Fear, Councilwoman Fear asks, were you, were you stopped by Hamilton Police?
Yes.
Were you, were you cited or were they, were they just saying you can't drive it on the road?
He said I couldn't drive it on the road anymore. I said, well, I have street legal tags of a street legal golf cart and I have a tag. He said, even though it's street legal, you can't drive it on the street. He said, take it home. I said, okay.
Okay, thank you. Just for clarity, as you can imagine, HPD, Hamilton Police and all the other police agencies are strapped with major things and your golf cart isn't probably, on a scale of one to 10, it's probably a one or two. And an officer saw you and thought, well, I'll stop you and have a nice conversation. So thanks for coming tonight. As you've heard, there's all kinds of vehicles that fall into the area of lower speeds, low speed, underspeed vehicles, whether they're two-wheel or four-wheel, whether they've got lights and turn signals, whether they're licensed or not by the state. So please come back to the ordinance review committee, commission and have a conversation. As the mayor said, there's time for Audience of Citizen. If you've got some questions, you were able to come up and share those conversations again, okay?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Thank you.
I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
That takes care of our Audience of Citizens. We now go to the consent agenda, which includes matters such as staff reports, caucus reports, the August 2025 financial report and the August 2025 investment report. We're going to go into the committee of the whole, which allows council to consider reports, ask questions about them, provide direction or comment on those reports. Offset the motion, the regular meeting be recessed. The committee of the whole take place.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to Vice Mayor Pullman, second by council member Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Hear you none. That motion is carried at 612. We now go over the caucus agenda. If you want to lead us in that, Mr. City Clerk?
Absolutely. Our first presentation will be made by our Director of Planning, Ms. Lauren Nelson.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I have before you tonight the proposed rezoning of the Fort Hamilton Hospital campus and its affiliated properties to business plan development. The application came from Kettering Health Hamilton and was heard by the planning commission. So Fort Hamilton Hospital, as you know, over the years has grown in not only the property that they acquire, but also the uses that are happening on their affiliated properties. They have some, you know, separate medical office building. Some of the parcels are still houses. So currently, if we look at their campus as a whole, it's about 23 acres and it's zoned. The hospital itself is residential plan development and then there are some other parcels that are both B1 and R2. So the goal of this proposal is to rezone the entire campus to business plan development, to make sure that there's consistent zoning across their entire property and also better align with, with our code, honestly, and bring them into better compliance with the existing regulations. So planning commission took action and did recommend approval. And here is a map. So the different colors just represent the, what the current zoning is and you can see how there's three different zoning that's represented currently between RPD, B1, and R2. So that's everything that they own right now and all of that would be zoned to BPD if you so choose. So are there any questions?
Thank you.
And next up for item number two and final presentation will be done by our city clerk, Daniel Tiedemann. Hello, Mayor, members of council. Got a very short caucus report to present to you tonight. So this is a liquor permit application for a D5J liquor permit at 202 North Third Street. The applicant is Early Birds LLC and the appropriate, city departments have reviewed this application. This includes building, fire, health, and police, and there have been no objections to this liquor permit. The permit itself is a full-service liquor license to be, liquor license for alcohol to be consumed on premises, similar to other establishments within the community entertainment districts such as Basil or Billy Yanks. The J on this permit is specific to our community entertainment districts, which we've approved a few years ago. Do we have any questions on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Daniel, is this a breakfast place? Is that what I understand?
That is my best estimate, but I have limited information on this business.
And is it open just during the day, like First Watch and those others? Is this like a morning till afternoon or is this an evening restaurant too?
I don't have much info. I can, I can try to find out for you if you'd like.
Okay. No, that's okay. I just wondered about the liquor service and a breakfast.
I heard Bloody Marys are a popular beverage.
Mimosa's, yeah.
Susan, it's a sister, sister restaurant to Birds in Fairfield. So I don't know if you caught that, but that's why it's Early Birds and that kind of carryover from their popular restaurant in Fairfield.
So it's a full-serve, morning, noon, night?
No, I believe it's going to be morning and afternoon.
Right, right. Similar to First Watch and that. But as Daniel said, they probably mimosas, Bloody Marys, wine brass, champagne and things like that. So they probably have requests for a full-service bar. And that way, if they do expand in the future, if it's expensive, if it's, when it's successful and they wish to go to dinner and things like that. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope. Thank you, sir. Offset the motion. The committee of the whole be closed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by council member Vaughn, second by council member Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Hear you none. That motion is carried at 616. Offset the motion. That the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by council member Nab, second by council member Ryan. Roll call vote on that, please.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Adopted at 617. And I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Motion that with the exception of the items so noted, council receive the reports of the consent agenda and concur on the recommendations.
Second.
Motion by vice mayor Pullman, second by council member Lauer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Hear you none. That motion is carried at 617. We now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items and I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Vaughn.
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Motion by council member Vaughn, second by council member Nab. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Hear you none. That motion is carried at 618. We'll go into pending legislation, agenda item number three, second reading of an ordinance involving proposed Dorana Hybrid expansion.
An ordinance approving a major planned development departure amendment of and specific use request for the Dorana Hybrid expansion located at 1093 Bell Avenue and rezoning of specific properties of the proposed Dorana Hybrid expansion to IPD Industrial Plan Development. Dave Othre, AIA, NCARB of MA Design for Dorana Hybrid applicant, second reading.
Mayor.
Council member Nab.
I move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Council member Nab, second by council member Ryan. Any discussion or comments on this one? Hear you none. Roll call though.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
And we now go to new legislation, agenda item number four, first reading of an ordinance involving sponsorships for public use.
An ordinance approving and adopting a policy for the city of Hamilton, Ohio's solicitation, acceptance, and recognition of sponsorships for public use, first reading.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number five, which is a resolution involving a loan application involving streets, Azalee Avenue, Ross Avenue, South McKinley, and a resolution for a loan application.
A resolution authorizing and directing the filing of a 0% interest loan application with the Ohio Public Works Commission relative to funding for the 2026 project year 40, Azalee Avenue, Ross Avenue, South McKinley Avenue, Water Main, and roadway improvement project, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to receive said loan funds.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by council member Vaughn, second by council member Lauer. Any discussion or comments on this one? Want to thank the city team for 0% interest. That always sounds good on a loan. And I see roadway improvement projects, so this has got a lot of good stuff in it. Any other comments? Roll call though.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
We go to agenda item number six, which is a resolution involving a grant application, also involving Hamilton Road Improvement Projects.
A resolution authorizing and directing the filing of a grant application with the Ohio Public Works Commission relative to funding for the 2026 fiscal year 27, project year 40, Hamilton Road Improvement Project, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to accept and receive said grant funds.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
I'll make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by council member Fear. Comments on this one? Again, thank you city team for all your efforts in getting these grants. There's no other comment. Roll call though.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
And we go to agenda item number seven, resolution involving tax levies and certifying them to the auditor of Butler County.
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies for the tax year 2025 collected in 2026 and certifying them to the auditor of Butler County, Ohio.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Lauer.
I'd like to make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by council member Lauer, second by council member Fear. Comments or discussion on this one? Hear you none. Roll call, please.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Audience of the city manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to remind everyone that next week, next Wednesday night, October 1st, Greater Hamilton Chamber of Commerce will be hosting the state of the city, just one block down the street here at the soon-to-open Cohatch location. Thank you. Audience of the city council.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Ryan.
I just want to commend the county commissioners for their $20 million rollback. Commissioner Dixon is making a call to action and I told him I would join him on this and bring this to council. He is clearly very unhappy with the state's handling of the situation. So he's asking anybody that's interested in fighting to keep our taxes low to join this effort. So let me know if you'd like to join. I told him I'll bring this to council and sign, sign me up and I'll let you know the rest of the council that wants to join this. Speaking of that, you know, with the commissioners rolling back some inside mileage, as you know, Mr. Mayor and Mr. City Manager, I'd like to see what we can do to help. I'd like to see what inside mileage we can roll back and give back to our residents and to join this effort. Even take a look at a utility rebate if we can. I just want to see what options we have that can give back to the residents.
I imagine there's going to be a financial analysis of what this could do. And also I mentioned, your father always wanted a utility refund check going to people every year. You and I talked about that. No matter what size that check was, if our owners, because we all own our utilities, they even got a $15 check every year. That's another story, but your dad always wanted us to do that.
I'll remind him.
Analysis. So I know they're still working on it, but just supporting what the county commissioners are doing in that homestead exemption piece is looking like the city's going to support that to the tune of somewhere between $200,000 and $300,000. So a sizable amount of money on behalf of the city going back to property owners. Councilman La.
Mr. Mayor, I am willing to volunteer to be a part of this. I am very discouraged by the decisions that have been made as far as excessive taxation. I have addressed this a couple of times. And I have great concerns about how this will affect our public schools. This is a, our public schools are important and it will have a major impact on our students as well as our teachers. And this is something that needs to be addressed on, through looking at it, down many avenues. So I am, I appreciate the commissioners doing so and I am willing to join.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Nab.
I echo Joel's comments. And Michael, I would like to be part of this, if you will, challenge that we're all taken. When Governor Dewine appointed the special committee to review this, it was taken out of legislature's, taken out of Senate's hands and they've just kind of, if, if you will, they've run rampaged and were the victims of this. So I'd like to join in Commissioner Dixon's invitation to be able to be part of this march and challenge that. Mr. City Manager, I'm glad the city is also part of this, if you will, $20 million that the county is getting back to the citizens and hundreds of dollars back to each household based on the evaluations and things. So it's a good thing. It's a start, but it's certainly not the end all. I think we've got a lot more work in front of us. So thank you, Michael.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Two things. First of all, I want to congratulate all the candidates last night for the forum. They, the candidates forum that they all spoke at, attended. It's nice to see people watching it on Facebook. I know it's a hard thing to do and I'm glad it was you and not me. But it's again, but it's, you did a nice, everybody did a nice job. I think it was very informational and I think anybody in the city should come to these and see what these candidates have to offer to the city so you can make your decision. But I think y'all did a great job and thanks for doing it. I enjoyed it. So I look forward to doing it next time, I guess. But the other thing is, we missed you at the golf outing. I didn't play very good. So it's, I had to fill in for mayor and I was still injured a little bit. I'm free of it now, but, and we tried, didn't we, Mr. Ryan? I mean, we.
I think we came in last.
No, we didn't.
So we did?
I really thought we did.
I saved the team, that's why.
You did?
Whatever. He slices.
Everybody had fun.
No, we had fun. The Friendly Sons golf outing is always a good one and thanks for asking me to play because I've been anxious to play golf for about nine weeks now. So it's, it's good to be back a little bit. But it was fun. I think they raised some good money and it was just a good time for all. I even, I think we had Tommy John was there and Ben Spade and Michael doesn't hit as good as he says he does, though. Okay, so, but we had a good time.
Man, this is cracking down.
Yeah, it is.
Cracking down on people.
We did miss your hits, Al. I mean, you had some good pots. We were terrible at pots. It was awful.
Thank you for supporting the Friendly Sons of St. Patrick and the cause that they definitely support. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
House member Fear.
Only because this was brought up, Birds hours will be six to two. They'll be open for both breakfast and lunch, but not dinner because you have to go to Birds for that. That's according to Mandy Gullit.
Carolyn, when do they plan that opening?
You want me that?
Okay.
I think that might be something to do with certificates and approvals.
They expect to open later this year.
Thank goodness for AI and the Google machine.
I don't know if anybody's ever had alcohol for breakfast though, so I'm not real sure of that.
Anyone else?
They need to have it for a council. I'm kidding.
I want to, I look forward to the fiscal analysis about the rollback. I think it's going to be interesting. I tell you what, Columbus has to fix some things themselves. And school funding, which has been unconstitutional for probably three decades now.
2000, or 1997, March of 1997, it was ruled unconstitutional in 2002. They went back on some things, but they're still responsible.
The Ring Day Fund's getting huge up there and it's been getting huge with our dollars. And there used to be something called a local government fund, which got more money and a lot of cities, townships, and villages dependent upon that. So I have, I have trust and faith in our legislators and I just hope that we get some common sense legislation that involves our taxes. Can you put up on that screen for a second there? Okay. Last night, the Reds game, hometown hero, Mrs. Nutty Bell, was a gentleman named Josh Brainerd, serving the Army. And he had about 100-plus people there. He's an American Legion Service Officer. The back of that jersey says Save a Warrior. He's a volunteer with the Save a Warrior program, which benefits those who come home, but who sometimes have some adjustment issues and what they see and went through. He's helping his fellow military personnel out. He's a great guy. His grandfather used to serve on the Civil Service Commission for a long time, an educator in the city of Hamilton. But Josh was a, got a standing ovation from all the folks there and I'm glad there was a good crowd for that game last night. But that's Josh Brainerd and a guy well worth knowing and a hometown hero.
Mr. Mayor.
House member Lauer.
Going along with the Josh Brainerd. I knew Josh when he was going through this and he never, you would never have known that he was going through these issues. It's important that we speak out on our mental health issues.
It's important that we speak out on our mental health issues if we are struggling. I would hope that you can find somebody, you can reach out to any of us, and we'll put you on the right pathway to get some help. You are valuable. Along the same lines, Corn Stand Jam was this past weekend, and it was a great event. Jimmy Unger runs it, and when you talk about someone who is committed to a cause, and a cause like this with suicide prevention and helping families after they have suffered through these unfortunate events, Jimmy Unger's a man of his word, and when an unfortunate event happens, Jimmy Unger goes out on site, visits a family, and helps them get in a better place, or at least on the pathway to a better place. And he's to be commended, and his event has given so much to Hamilton. I was very glad to be a part of that.
You know, Corn Stand Jam, a lot of folks talk about mental illness awareness, and that's talk. He's raising funds for counseling, scholarship, medical research, and also the new Greg Bisdorf Scholarship, which will go to someone interested in going to college and in the public service area. And that's what the scholarship presentation that we were all staged for. But, I mean, Corn Stand Jam, a lot of great people, great volunteers, and doing something instead of just talking. And I know Columbus could probably help us out in that situation, too, as far as mental health, residential treatments, whatever things that we could have in this state. Few other things, a lot of things going on this weekend. There's a gathering at the North End on Saturday. I know that Ray and Tony Moore are involved with that from the North End Market. There's also a Highland Park celebration, I think from like 3:00 to 8:00, and that just celebrates Highland Park, which is one of the super neat neighborhoods that we have. They're all great, each one's different. Highland Park is just a real super nice park area and a lot of beautiful homes. Pink Floyd concerts also Saturday night. Sunday afternoon at 2:00 is the rededication of Butler County Veterans Memorial, and I'm not sure if you had a chance to see it as you drive by. It's up at Veterans Park. There's now five flags up there, one for each branch of the service. There's a new monument up there that I will truly say is worthy of Washington, DC. We've got two of them in this city, our Soldier Staters and Pioneers Monument, Washington, DC, and this one also is truly that special of a monument. And that's a monument which lists those who died in combat in Butler County over all the wars and conflicts that we have had. There's also on Sunday, the Hispanic Festival. So if you can't find something to do in Hamilton that inspires you, makes you smile, I don't know, I'm not sure what your problem is, because there's, that is, a lot of things going on in Hamilton. Coming up, October 18th, the Joe Nuxall Historic Marker in the North End. There's going to be a dedication of that. Hopefully, it will be on the 18th. We've got plans going for that. Same day, there's going to be like a park celebration. There's going to be wiffle ball, probably softball, car show, trunk or treat, all on October the 18th. But it starts out recognizing a historic individual, like the highest character person who ever came out of Hamilton, Ohio, and that would be Joe Nuxall. November the 8th is a Staff Sergeant Fred Brown flag and plaque dedication. And that's at Bailey Square. Council member Lauer's been involved with that. Melissa Hayden in the back has been involved with that. Big, big, it's going to change the nature of that area because the flagpole, the plaque, honoring somebody who grew up in the 2nd Ward, who went and saved people's lives, truly saved his own fellow soldier's lives. So a lot of great things going on. We really recognize special people in this town, Greg Bisdorf, for example, Fred Brown. Realize how a great city that we have, when we have events like this that recognizes cultures, heroes, you know, average folks. Like me getting a chance to actually serve people in this city, I'm so proud of that. So, anyone else on council, anything they want to say at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Council member Nav?
Thanks for running through the calendar, Pat. So many people tell us, we don't know what's going on, and the mayor just shared, and I hope all of our viewers and journals here tonight, Steve through TV Hamilton, they understand all of these opportunities. At the candidates forum last night, one of the candidates said, used to be one or two things a week, maybe, to do in Hamilton. Now there's one or two things a day, if not more a day, to do in our great city. So again, mayor, thanks for sharing what's coming up. There's a lot more out there, but...
I forgot to mention Operation Pumpkin, too.
Yes, sir.
How could I not mention Operation Pumpkin? That's next weekend.
Second weekend.
So, my gosh.
Stay tuned, huh?
Stay tuned, and also please come to council meetings and learn when restaurants open and close and all that, because it's great that we can help bring that to the public's attention, because we got a lot of great restaurants opening here, and wow.
Mr. Mayor?
Please, yes.
I do have one other thing.
Great.
It slipped my mind. Last week, at the Hamilton High School Homecoming Parade, our own Peggy Bangy from the Department of Neighborhoods was the grand marshal. And Peggy has done so much work with youth and 17 Strong and was very rightly recognized for all that she's done. I was there, saw her, all the kids coming up and hugging her. She knew everyone, and I'll make a little bit of fun here with her. I drove her in my car, and she's sitting on the back, and people are yelling and waving, Peggy, Peggy. She said, I didn't know so many people knew my name. I said, it's on the side of the car. We laughed, but it was a fun, it was fun, and she was queen for a day and deserved every bit of it.
She sure does.
Susan, I did speak with Peggy today. I told her it was probably time to take the tiara off.
Yes, yeah, it was a great evening.
She leads us in the city employee Salvation Army Christmas collection. She does a collection for shoes, athletic shoes, for, I don't know, multiple grades for the Hamilton City Public Schools. And there's things we don't even know about that she does that apparently Hamilton High definitely knows and the Hamilton City Schools know. So she's a tremendous, very valuable employee, a real all-star.
She is.
Anything else? Okay. Request to go into executive session, Mr. City Manager?
There is, Mr. Mayor, two reasons.